...to order the emergency meeting of the Life Wood Town Council, March eighteenth at one P M. Today, we were called an emergency meeting, was not posted in accordance with the typical procedures because under the state statute, an emergency meeting does not have to be posted, but we did reach out to our local press and media outlets to be here with us today, and of course, we are capturing this on video, and I believe Ms. Ball is live streaming on Facebook for the benefit of the citizens. Ms. Cowan, will you call the local police?
Mayor Franklin.
Here.
Councilman Bowman.
Present.
Councilman Griffin. Uh Larry Griffin.
You.
Councilman Swan Griffin.
You.
Councilman Brock.
I'm here.
All right. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on today's meeting. Lord, we ask that you provide a calming and healing hand to those around the world suffering with this virus. Lord, we ask your guidance as we move forward and make decisions in the best interest of all citizens and employees of the town of Life Wood. Be with our first responders and military as they help to fight this virus and assist others in need. We ask all these names in your son's name, Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. Please be seated. In light of the president's proclamations and the governor's proclamation and taking further actions to try to combat the coronavirus, we called this emergency meeting today. I've asked Mr. Cook to develop a draft emergency ordinance, which we will review today, make changes to, edit as appropriate, and then hopefully pass something that will tend to safeguard our population here in Life Wood to the best interest of everyone involved. So, we wait on Mr. Cook, is he not available yet? Let us go around the room for any opening comments or any concerns that the council members may have, and I will start with Councilman Griffin, the younger.
Excuse me, let me pull up this document.
Absolutely, that's fine, Mr. Brock, Councilman Brock.
I think that it was a good first step that we took in shutting down the park. At my employer, which is the Public Employee Benefit Authority, they are closing the visitor center, which is the customer intake, effective tomorrow. I didn't actually not know this until I was actually leaving the building to come here, and that speaks to me about the severity of the situation when Piva is closing customer intake. That says something because I can't recall other than inclement weather, when the whole agency is shut down, a time when they would just close it off in the public, so that kind of didn't spook me, but it sends a clear message that I believe that we have to go a little bit further looking to safeguard our employees, our citizens from this active threat. I yield their mayor my time, sir.
Councilman Griffin, the senior.
Well, based on our last meeting and where we were, the changes that we made seem to be appropriate. Right now, it just lets us know that this movement in rapid fire is changing daily, hourly. I think the meeting today, hopefully, we're going to solidify what we're going to do and make the proper necessary changes. Albeit, flexibility has got to be involved because, as I said, it's changing rapidly, so we got to see what we can do that's going to make the community safest. Waiting on all of this stuff to come together so we can take a look at it, see exactly what we, what procedures we're going to take.
Councilman, Councilman Ball, I don't think I can add anything. Back to Council, Councilman Griffin, who's also an emergency management professional with the side by side Department of Transportation, as well as a distinguished council member on this board, what do you have to offer, sir?
I think, you know, I think we made great strides in the first go around with the park. That led our citizens to know that we're taking this series. You know, I think the next step, what we're going to do today will further protect the town's employees and further solidify with citizens that we are here, we're still going to be government, we're still going to operate. So, we have to take measures to protect our citizens also, so we're ready to, let's work this out.
Mr. Cook, are you ready, sir, you need a few minutes?
We've got a ordinance together, kind of ties out, it is very preliminary ordinance, just as to make the time we had to prepare. So, we'll just need to make some changes to, I put it up on the screen, too.
The, the goodie in Brian's draft is in the, it resolve, if you take an end of the document. I, I, he and I were acting independently, I came up with a slightly different draft without all of the
leading background, right?
Without all the background, and you may want to consider, at least the concept of what I tried to capture was to authorize the mayor and administrator to procure whatever devices and software et cetera needed to establish a meeting by electronic means system that would be open, public access as well, contemporaneous public access. I don't think we have that capability, but the draft that I put together was that the mayor and administrator, without regard to competitive procurement, go about to buy whatever we need to have to establish such a system so that you can meet remotely and barbed or whoever, the members of the public would have the ability to tune in contemporaneously. The other thing that I need to mention to you is, while it is a hallmark of town government to have citizen input on your action items, there's no legal requirement that you have citizen input except on matters involving a public hearing. Now, that sounds draconian, but I don't know if there's a system out there that's going to allow public input from members of the public in your, your otherwise remote sessions. And incidentally, Jake Denver and I agree on this statement of the law, unless it's a mandatorily required public hearing, there's no legal requirement for public input, so to the extent that would affect your decision making about what kind of system you might establish. Certainly in this emergency situation, I wouldn't suggest to you that, you know, long term you would have meetings without convening and letting, but you could still use that system for folks that were out of town, wanted to participate, or members of the public that wanted to monitor what was going on, so, end of my comment.
Absolutely, and I think that ties in exactly what we want anyway, so that's one of the platforms that both Councilman Brock and Councilman Griffin ran for office on, is opening this up more to public where people can dial in, watch it live on the live feed system, and we'll do that.
This is broader, this was a broader concept than just voting by phone. This would, this would have us go forward to establish a remote meeting capability, but that's just a policy.
Comments, Mr. Cook?
This ordinance again is a very rough draft, I haven't proof read the spelling or anything. It takes a little bit of city of Columbia incorporated with the executive orders from the governor and also the last meetings that we had, and of course, the president and his national emergency declaration, so again, we can add, delete, take out what you wish, it is a very rough draft, as I stated. So, I tried to incorporate a little bit of the ordinance that Mr. Meggs was just talking about, but again, as he was just explaining to me, this would be more broad in scope and scale.
Right, and the need for that last paragraph is, we have an ordinance on the books which dictates that we will not use call-in, is that correct?
Correct.
You can't, you can't hold a, our ordinance reads now that we cannot hold a meeting without a citizen participation in face to face. You can't call in, a member can't be suspended.
Members cannot vote.
Cannot vote via electronically, they have to be present at the meeting, so this, that's why we're suspending that ordinance in this paragraph so that we can comply with the state statute, which says you can do it under emergency circumstances, so.
Yeah, for that sixty-one days.
That's right.
No longer. No longer, so then sixty-one, sixty-two is out.
That's right.
We have to come back and actually vote on it again.
Correct, that's stated.
Then we can cancel at any time.
You can rescind that ordinance at any time, sure.
Can we vote electronically to extend or rescind, or do we have to physically be present?
Well, if the ordinance is in force, then yeah, you could, assuming we're covered with that draft, yeah, you could vote electronically to repeal or suspend the
But not extend.
But not extend. Now, I'm, shall I take the liberty of just reading you the, the gotcha in this one? This is the, the different concept. Town council meetings may be conducted using such electronic means as will allow full participation by the mayor and town council members and full access by the general public, including public comment and discussion as appropriate. Voting by electronic means is expressly permitted. The mayor is directed and authorized to procure any devices and software required to achieve these objectives and may proceed to do so without regard to competitive bidding. End of, gotcha. So, if you
Is that the ordinance or a different copy of the state statute you read?
This is a draft ordinance that I prepared.
He's got another draft, this is Mr. Cook's, you have one a little different, you say, right?
Yeah.
But they are, they are the same ordinance, just two
Two different styles?
Are they two different ordinances?
Two different ordinances.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give everybody a copy. All right, I just didn't put all the, the goodie in from the various governors.
And I asked Mr. Cook specifically to add as much as he could get, you know, the hands on, so that the individuals in public, when they see this, will understand based on all these decisions of higher levels of government leads us to take action at this level. So, we, would you recommend, Mr. Meggs, that we eventually end up with a product that merges these two as best possible?
Well, if, if the, if it's the will of council to go forward with this bigger picture, I would suggest that we take Brian's extensive finding statement and just cut and paste that section.
Right.
As the gotcha.
Gotcha, so this will be the document with this background on top of it, okay?
That's what I thought we were doing, okay. Now, you'll, you'll notice that I put in language which would have the system-enabled citizen comment, et cetera, and that may not, I don't know, it's I don't have any experience with all this electronics, so I don't know if the system is available, but we allow for citizens to be on their computer and and talk back and forth to.
Or calling.
It, it does exist.
It is.
City code uses it.
And then, I mean, we could go to another route and use slightly a bit or something to that extent.
I'm just, I'm too old.
You could just Google Hangout, really, if you want, some sort, but the, the problem becomes, does everyone have access to to those particular systems or be able to log in, I don't, and
Well, the easiest way to do is, you know, just open up a conference bridge line that we can control to a certain extent, make sure folks are muted, that's going to be some issue there, folks not muting their lines. And you can open it up to citizen comments and, you know, take it, Melissa can still ask, you know, name and address and move it there.
Yeah, conference calling is not an issue, I don't believe. Video, video conferencing could, could potentially, that, that's going to take more time to just set up a simple conference call, just simply because as Councilman Griffin alluded to, things are changing every hour. We, we don't have the time, resources aside, to really set up something, I mean, you know, people want to jump right in the deep end anyways. So, but
Or both, if you can get both done, then
Well, that'd be, that'd be great, but, you know, who, who knows what's going to be available tomorrow, who's going to be available tomorrow?
That's right.
Mr. Meggs, your gotcha is section one?
Yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the gotcha part.
I, I was proposing here is to add to section one to Mr. Cook's ordinance. That's, that's correct?
That's what I would suggest, if, if it is your will to have the, the bigger picture.
Yeah, do you, do you agree with me that background is important, if not, we can take it out, but all it is is just a little bit of reading background.
Well, yeah, it, it certainly, you know, in the ordinary sense, it, it's helpful to have all those findings, however, it lets you use them, but this thing is, this is worldwide, so I didn't like, people going to just wake up one morning and say, we don't wonder why they did that.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
So, I'm good with, I'm making, you know, we
Can you go ahead and do that, Mr. Cook, can you cut and paste your?
I don't have the ability on this screen, but I have to get back to my, I can take notes and certainly go to my computer and do that.
Okay, so we want to cut and paste all your wherethas. Now, the tricky part comes in, where does that paragraph go, the gotcha in this one and the gotcha in this one, is it just another section?
You can do without the, that gotcha.
That one, don't need this one, because this covers it.
Yes.
But this, this says sixty-one days and this one does
Well, we don't need that statement because it's a matter of law.
Understand, okay.
Okay, I'm making a motion on that.
I think you need to, technically speaking, I need to have it in final form before you
Yeah, let him go make the changes and then we'll read it and then vote on it.
I can, uh, you don't need my findings, yours are far more detailed, so we just need that one paragraph.
Would, would
We just need section one put over.
Would not be prudent to put it between the be ordained and be further ordained, right there, like on the second page?
They're talking about taking out the second?
No, I'm talking about just adding section one, like between these two paragraphs right here, that would make the most sense, just, and then continue to keep all this
Yeah, and you, and if you want to ordain the, the statement, the emergency ordinance, but you don't, you don't need number two.
Yeah, you need that one out.
Here, we don't need this?
No, it's, it's addressed in the language.
Oh, right here, and so these are saying the same, okay.
And the sixty-one days is implied by law.
Yeah, that's just a matter of law.
So, Mr. Meggs, I'm going to go make those changes, so I just take this paragraph?
Just pull that paragraph, I'm going to try to email it to you.
I should go right here?
And just stick it right there and take that one.
Be further, be further ordained, or?
Uh, well
Or just take this one?
Assistant city, assistant town attorney. Let's see, let's make this
Yeah, I'm going to put a, we'll do recess.
Well, let's make it Do we need to discuss operations in the town?
Sure.
Can we do that in a nation?
Well, I've thought about that, there's really need to affect that section, because we're not talking about a specific person, I'm actually, we're talking about a blanket. It's something all though.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think it qualifies under executive action.
Yeah, I don't think
I think it needs to be public.
Yeah.
Magazine.
That's what the date here is.
This language here stays or go?
Take, take it out, stick that, stick that in its place.
Okay, what we're doing, we need to make sure everybody knows what we're doing.
That's right.
Let's see.
Sarah Lynn's going to tell you, so we're back.
All right, no, no, we're going to keep discussing, so then this is the blanket proposal, which declares a state of emergency, but what does that mean to our operation here, and that's what we need to talk about, too. So, any comments?
My first question would be, if this is, if this is our blanket, would we need to further define what those actions are within this ordinance? Or, no?
No, not in this one, because then we're going to move to talk about operations internally that's separate from
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't ordain that.
Again, and what about, what about further actions we want, we want to may take in regards to town activity, such as what Columbia has done, possibly instituting a curfew, restricting access possibly to, to various establishments.
That, that, wouldn't that be added in here if we discuss those items, like we closed the park, we want to specify what closing means?
Sure, it wouldn't hurt to, to stick a section in there dealing with closing D O C O.
Well, we've already done that, so, which was effective, what, yesterday, the seventeenth?
Talked with the mayor about that aspect several days ago, and if, if you think we're going to get to a place where we need to be able to enforce people, get, stay out of the park, I want to come walk, no, you, park closed, can't come in the park, no, it's a park I'm going to walk, so a problem like that, if it comes to that state and it is your intent to call the sheriff and maybe get law enforcement involved, then we need to ordain something. Otherwise, if you're just going to close the park as we've done and trust people to honor the desire of council and act, you know, behave themselves, then you, you just, you don't need to ordain anything because if you're not going to enforce it or you don't have the means to enforce it, then basically you're
Yeah, a voice vote, a voice vote.
So, you're thinking not ordain it? I, I disagree, I disagree though, I think that you, I think you should give yourself the, the option to choose whether or not you want to enforce it.
Right, but I'm, I don't think it should be written in here, I think it's, we should pass a voice vote on the actions that, for instance, we're going to close the town hall down to everything but telephonic business, and every employee here is going to lock the door and be gone for two weeks. If we want to do something like that, I think we can do that on a voice vote, because that is a piece that will change over time, whereas this is going to stay in effect, so you got, you know, I mean
Make this as minimal as possible, something that we can
I mean, that's okay, but we can do it either way, but, you know, when you start writing the individual things in here, now, if you want to change a piece of it, you got to come do the whole thing again.
Well, the problem potentially comes is what if, what if the park becomes overrun, and then you don't have the means to enforce the closure? Then we've got to reconvene or get on the telephone and, and either pass another ordinance that would give us the, get some teeth
Or ask the state for help, because the governor's declared that also, no groups more than ten people, so we can ask him to come enforce it.
And that, and that would be, I don't think we'd have an issue with whether the sheriff is going to enforce a town ordinance, which that's part of his deal right now, but it would be state mandated under the governor's under the governor's directive, or his, his executive order.
Sure.
And, you know, and he solved our problem with weddings and such as that, because he's, or he's directed that, that thing be closed, so we're we're good there, and then, so I guess really the question is, if you can't secure the facility, meaning lock people out, like you can town hall or the D O C O, then, you know, how do you, how are you going to manage and enforce your decision in wide open spaces, and then, I think Councilman Brock's right in the sense that if we thought there was going to be an issue, then we need an ordinance in order to somehow enforce it, but is the sheriff going to actually enforce for us?
Make a decision to, you know, close town hall, who's going to be up here to watch it anyway? Town hall going to be at home, so come on, let's don't, let's don't chase, let's don't chase the rabbit around the rug, let's come and do what we decided we were going to do, pass this ordinance. Right, so who does the, how does town hall, how do y'all want town hall to be affected by this? So, a second question.
I think, I think I didn't get any negative feedback from my letter that I wrote out to you all yesterday. You know, definitely like to discuss it, but this is just me. And if we're looking at closing until school goes back April the third. So, all employees that are basically deemed essential not to report to work and to notify, employees deemed essential, services that has to continue, I mean, I'm sure there are some things that has to be done, like if we're out payroll and stuff like that, things has to be signed. Now, we deem them as essential in paying some bills if, if need be doing that time. But they can still continue to work from home, having calls for, to handle the requests from the public. I do think we need to still have some rim of customer service, somebody still needs to answer a phone or return a phone call to citizens here. Signs should be posted on the door, given directions should be set and applied. All employees will continue to be paid, and essential employees, in my opinion, would receive bonus at a later determined scale based on them still working to cover phones and things like that, to pay deals and whatnot. Of course, we talked about the CDC guidelines and government, so we, we beat that horse, we beat the horse with the park already. We talked about town council meetings, that's all, I do think we need to make some, let's talk about the town hall first, and then we'll get the outside of business. So, that's just mine's of the town.
Okay, based on what you just said, what we have in effect now only goes through the thirty-first of March, so we, we would have to modify our last meeting decision to change it the third of April, if that's what we're going to do, but as it stands now, Mr. Cook has the authority to release employees to work from home right now, on a, on a as needed basis, so if somebody needs to come in and do payroll, we understand that's in effect, so if we continue with that, then we don't have to take any action except extend the date. But if you want to change it and mandate they stay at home, except for A, B, C, and D, then we'd have to pass that by a voice vote.
I think we need to mandate that, I think we
Mandate it, we're going, except for, Mr. Cook?
Well, essential staff, so I mean, if he has the capability to do these functions from home, I think that's the exception. I don't know who's essential, and we did not identify that in our last central, who's essential, what functions are essential around here? So, the bills being paid, payroll, all of those things, and, I mean, I don't know if outstanding license, you know, we're not trying to catch that money right now per the governor's order, but we need to figure that piece out.
I got you, and that would be Julie with the payroll. Mr. Cook and myself and or council member Bowman have to be available to sign, two of the three have to sign, so we would be essential to come up and do that as needed, and that's maybe twice a week.
Would, would we want to, would we want to define individuals, or we want to give the discrepancy to, to Mr. Cook or to you, Mr.?
Good point, good point.
Right now, that's what I think we need to define individuals.
Okay.
I mean, because we gave the, the, the passing gave Mr. Cook the, the power to basically say, all right, you can, you, you can work from home.
Right, that's the way it stands right now, he can still do that, right?
The only, the only difference I see in what you guys are saying from the last ordinance is whether or not we're going to send Mr. Cook home. Because last time, we, he already had the description, everybody else is going to go home, so that's already done. So, we don't need to go back over, that's already done. The only difference is whether or not we send Mr. Cook home.
That's right, and close the door.
And close the door, and if, if he goes home, he said at the last meeting that he and Judy had the, the capability of being able to run these things from a phone at home, so you guys are not in the office anyway, so you're going to, whether or not you're available for signature has nothing to do with the staff here because you're not in here.
That's right.
Well, we had some gaps, we did not fully identify what V C three, the, the internet service phone, what their true capabilities were, that came out after our meeting.
Okay, so
So, now it came out.
So, it's, it's, they can do it?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we still had the same
They can work from home, but it's that they couldn't get individual phone calls, because it comes through here, through, routed through one number, you have to send it to an extension, so you can't just call Kurt and get Kurt at his house unless you have the number.
We already established the fact, we don't want to give out anybody
Exactly, but that's what I'm saying, but no one can talk to anybody except for
To me, it's simple, if, if they call the office and leave a message, then somebody monitors the phone, pick up and call if Kurt needs to call somebody, or Judy needs to call somebody, I mean, it's, it's one number. They got one number they can call him, they got a question, answer, put it on the recorder, we monitor the recorder. They got one number they can call him, they got a question, uh answer, put it on the recorder, we monitor the recorder, make the call. Mr. Cook monitors the call, he, he gives the position to whomever it is and they handle the situation. That means they're home working and the phone is gonna come to uh town hall. Mr. Cook monitors the phone and he sends whatever request is out to wherever he needs to be, if he can answer it and uh, and we work from there. Look guys, we're not, we, we're not gonna be able to solve this whole thing and make it proof. What we gotta do is take the necessary precautions that eliminates any of the problems. As I said before, what we're saying today may change by the next, by the end of the day. And, and, and we'll be back, but right now from where we are, the, the, what we already have in place, only one thing has to change. It's what I, I seen him, and that's whether or not we send Mr. Cook home. Cause he already has the power to, we already given him the power to go home and if we're gonna change the date from the thirtieth to the third, then that's the other thing.
Just make a motion.
Now, so I mean, what y'all wanna do?
One, I believe you were saying that as opposed to giving Mr. Cook the power, we actually mandate that employees leave. As it, as it currently stands, he has the option to send them home, but he doesn't have to. He has the authority to, but is not required to, we could, we could amend that and require all employees to work from home.
And that's all that my letter was, if, if, if the change in the, in the environment out here. Has changed to the point and employees are still working, then we have to come together as a body and say go home. So that's, that's, I mean, I agree with my elder version, you know. We need to just, just go ahead and say it's done here um and be done.
That's an option, I mean, that's fine, I was inclined coming in here today to just say we closed the door to the public, but Mr. Cook stays here. And works their phones and does other things and I'll come see him twice a week to sign uh checks or whatever we need to do for payroll purposes and things. But that's another option, that's what I was inclined, but if you wanna just close the door, send him home.
I would mandate employees.
You still gotta bring, you still got to bring Julie in here to do the payroll, so I mean, cause she's gotta print the checks and things, I don't think she has that type of.
Well, at that point, it wouldn't be, in my opinion, at that point, it wouldn't be fair to Mr. Cook.
Okay.
At that point, I mean, it, it, I think he told us what the passing, what four or five people come in the door, I think.
Well, then let's just shut the door. Just lock the door.
All right, what, what's the language, what's the language for saying, we're gonna shut the door, Mr. Cook, everybody go home?
No, I say go home, I say shut the door, I say shut the door, people still in here, but no, no public can come in here.
The ones that are essential and need to be here, right, I agree with that, yep.
I mean.
If Kirk can do what he does at home.
People are going to work every day, people have to work.
So you, you're taking away?
I'm not taking anything away, I'm just saying, like the other places have done, is there limiting public access?
Okay, the question that I'm asking, when you say take away, we've already established that Mr. Cook can send them home, so we were sending that.
If they wanna go home.
Like that in effect, I mean.
You didn't say they had to go home.
But if he tells them to go home.
But if he tells them to go home, then I guess.
Or, or they could request.
To go home, yeah.
But that's the power that we gave.
Yeah, we gave him all the flexibility there.
Yeah, we gave him the power to send him home, so if he sends him home, that's what I was, I was trying to. Where are we trying to, what, what are we trying to do?
Right, limit public access is what I thought to the building.
Yep, that's the way I see it.
Eventually, we need to stay a couple steps ahead, eventually, what is gonna happen? Okay, what's gonna happen when the state government closes, Richland County closes?
You know, anarchy.
Pretty much, but I mean, when counties close, the state follows, state offices in that county follow, so. We, we need to, and I'm not comparing us to any of them in this town, but one smart thing Columbia does, they are a step ahead of the state. Every single move, watch the state go to a curfew, it's coming. So we need to, we can take that next step, send employees home, we can do all this from home.
I don't, I don't see a curfew, I mean, I've already had two phone calls from companies here on North Point that have second and third shift employees. They've already said, what are you gonna do about this curfew and my employees coming to second and third shift?
Well, they can still try.
I was not entertaining that idea of a curfew.
I'm not saying we do a curfew, but I'm just saying, if the governor mandates a curfew, we doing a curfew.
Of course, you have to.
So that's what I'm saying, we need to stay a step ahead, not do a curfew, but if state offices close, state offices are moving. Everybody possible to telework, everybody, you look at the garages downtown right now, you're skimpy. Everybody is moving to telework. If you can forward a phone call to a cell phone or Mr. Cook phone or somebody checking messages, we still have to keep some level of customer service.
Right, and then we gotta physically sign things, and that's.
And that one, I don't think physically signing would be a problem, I mean, we'll do and, and get going.
Right. Well, I, just logically to me, I think we should give him the authority to also let him go home and close the door. If it gets to the point where he thinks he needs to do that. So I wouldn't man, I, well, and you can do this, but I wouldn't mandate that we send everybody home. I do like the fact we close the door and put signs up, all business will be done telephonically, here's the number, here's Mr. Cook's number, here's the mayor's number. Or whatever, so they can call me, um and then, but the employees that need to be in here can come in here on a given day to day basis. And do what they gotta do and they go on about home and continue to work from home. So in other words, you're delegating to the town administrator to make the decision, it's getting bad around here, we have a case, let's say hypothetically, in uh Ridgeway. Right, or right here in Blith, outside of Blithely, okay, now he knows it's getting bad, he don't wanna take the risk, so he's gonna close and he's gonna go home to telework. And then three days later, everything starts dropping off, a week later or what have you, then he says, well, I'm gonna come back in. It's cause he has the authority to change his schedule as he thinks and the employee's schedule, I mean, that's what we're paying him to do anyway, just to manage the folks and. But that, that's just my gut instinct there, close the door to the public with phone numbers. And allow the employees and the town administrator to decide how he wants to send people home, work from home. Maybe you wanna come in and pick up a few paper things to work on and then you go right back home to work on, you know, in and out, but not interfacing with public. That's a potential, and then we have to change the date, if you wanna do it through April fourth like the state, we're gonna have to at least take an action to move our current situation. To April fourth or third, whatever you said.
Yeah, that's April third, that's when school go, but is it April?
School's supposed to go back April first.
And if it's Thursday, it's Friday.
Well, the, I know there has been some chatter within the state about permanently closing schools for the rest of the year. I know that Ohio is considering it, I know that Virginia is considering, I know New York and California are absolutely considering it. Once that domino falls, it's gonna be a trickle effect across the country.
Right.
And it's gonna, if that decision is made, it's gonna be made before April first, maybe by the end of this.
Well, in that case, we can say indefinitely until.
I think that would be a better wording to do.
From now on until canceled by this morning.
We can hold a conference call and rescind that. I'm not exactly comfortable with the idea of having employees come and go from town hall. And the reason is this, the idea behind social distancing is to prevent the movement of individuals.
Then you have them one at a time, they have blocks of time, Julie comes in from one to two.
That, that, that's an option.
Well, the, the only, only thing that we got here, Brock, is, is payroll has to be signed, somebody gotta come in and do it. And whether they, I'm sure, so if you say this, they can't come back in, then you can't do payroll.
That's true.
Somebody.
Well, could we not pay in advance?
No, these invoices come in weekly, they have to be, these checks have to be done and signed off.
And then you also have other bills, not just payroll.
That's a shortcoming of our system, we should be able to authorize electronic payments.
That, we might work for that later.
I understand, I understand, that's not initially addressed now, no, 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 I get that, I get that.
Keep that in mind for later, we'll bring that up during the budget meetings, yeah.
I just, it just feels like if you're out and about, you're traveling, there is potential risk for exposure. Statistically speaking, this virus is probably in our town, I, I, I would almost be willing to bet that it's in the building that I work in. It might be in the building that you work in, it, it, it's, it's gonna be everywhere.
It could be in this room right now.
And, you know what, with the twelve people in here, it probably, it may be, very well may be, I don't know.
I'm seeing the situations where we are right now, just like we in here right now, this uh, uh is essential that we do something.
Yes.
So if we had to bring somebody in because it's essential, I mean, that's, that's what we gotta do, we can't, we can't run from it, we can't hide it, cause we don't know where it is.
You're absolutely right.
So, I mean, we're sitting here talking, but it could be running around in this room, so.
It's possible.
Let's, we gotta deal with, let's work with what we got, let's work through this situation.
Then let, then let's, let, then let us limit the, as, as lean as we can run, let's run as lean as we can run.
So, are you going back to my original concept now? Will we figure out the essential services, we lay that out?
Sure, let's, let's define it and then, and then move on.
So what's, what's essential here that we need Mr. Cook?
Mr. Cook and Julie, those are the two names that have been tossed out.
Yeah, well, I, I've got a, the, the, Mr. Mayes too, the, the town clerk is a constitutional officer, the town attorney is a constitutional officer. The town minister in arrest, so ha- having said that, does that not in, indeed make them essential personnel?
Mr. Mayes and Ms. Cal, can you two work from home?
That's what I do.
Well, then the answer is.
Yes, for you.
Okay, then, then those are two that we can cross off our list. Ms. Maisel?
Yeah, Julie can work from home, but she's gonna at some point gonna have to come in to do checks and things. And if she's the only one in here, and Mr. Cook's on this, if he's here that day, and she's on that side.
That's an acceptable system, yes, so we're talking, we're really talking two individuals plus you and potentially councilman.
I, I have to ask about, well, yeah, if, if you're gonna just suspend billing permits or things like that until, but if you're gonna have those come in, you're gonna have to have her come in.
She got, she had to go, she got deadlines.
We're, we're still on over that.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's it, if we're talking three, four people, then let's define it and move forward.
Right, but see, I, I don't think that's, that's, I mean, I like that, that probably for another meeting, but right now, if we just let the town administrator make that decision, he can handle that.
Okay.
So we don't, now have going forward, we need to talk about electronic bill paying and talk about in the future, who's essential, not cause we're already knee deep in this. And if you just leave it up to his professional uh decision, if he knows Kirk can work from home, he's gonna send him home.
That's what I've been at work every night to ten P M plus, cause we got to figure out for six thousand employees, who's essential.
That's right, and the federal government's already done it, cause every year when they have that budget fiasco and they don't, has a budget on time, you start uh laying off. Non-essential personnel, so you have to have a list.
I think where we are right now is town administrator knows all of that, I mean, he knows who's essential, I think we, we gotta rely on him.
Right.
To be able to do what we're saying being done, cause we can sit here and play with this and.
That's right.
And come up with, he, he can tell us right now, and a matter of fact, from the, a matter of fact, from the last meeting, he practically told us. Who can work from home and uh, and that's all it is, now, if we need to get him in here, if we're gonna write down names and stuff like that, but other than that, if we give him, as you say. The thought, we give him the authority, the last thing he'll do is.
Yeah, he can go home himself and lock the door and just let us, and let us know, and they're home to that.
The only thing that we need to change is whether or not we're gonna send him home, if he needs to go.
And then lock, lock doors to the public.
That's the initial piece that we voted on, he had all the beat.
But, and, and uh what, my interpretation of that was, I was incorrect, cause I thought from the initial, we were sending him home. And we said, no, he's, the office gotta stay open, so he's gonna, he'd be the person that was gonna be here, so. That would be the only thing that we need to change right now.
Background, the background, do it ordain. So we're declaring a state emergency and we are authorizing electronic meetings. And it does not have an expiration because the mandate from the state, the state statute says sixty one days. So we just have to put the date on it, and then internally, if you all make a motion to change our date to April first or third or indefinitely. And then we can convene and change it when we need to, cause see, if you have a date and then the state goes ahead and makes it April thirtieth. Now we gotta come back again and change that one date on.
Let's make that indefinite.
Indefinite, does that sound right, Mr. Mayes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then are we clo, are we locking the door to the public? So the, the motion should sound something like this, make a motion, which I cannot do, that Mr. Cook be allowed to control the employee. Schedules to include his own and that the town hall will be closed to all the telephonic business. Something like that, effective immediately, effective whatever, and uh.
Do we put it closed to the public?
Right, closed, uh, it's closed to the public for everything except telephonic business, and there'll be a big sign, there's already a bunch of signs on the door right now, they talked a little bit about it. And the manor, I guess.
We're gonna, yes, if we, we've established a date, we've established a date for the closure of the park and the manor. We need to amend that to uh create that, to put in the word indefinitely versus assigning a date, cause easy, we could just do a quick telephone conference call and rescind that.
Because being honest, if I ain't mistaken, it's in my notebook in the car, the C D C. Looking at eight weeks on that schedule.
Was that forty?
Or we have to include that in this motion?
They were up in two weeks, eight.
I mean, we used to.
Which puts us mid-May then, what the?
Have you been listening to us, Mr. Cook?
I have, yes, sir.
So you can decide, if things get bad, you can just close the door and you go home and then you call us and let us know and we operate like that until the threat is passed.
Yes, sir.
Or you feel comfortable, and then if we have to come in and do payroll, we just, we come in and do payroll, put it on a clipboard and set it outside, do it on the hood of your car, that's fine, I mean. Yeah, that's right.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna go that far, but yeah, you could do that.
Mr. Cook, just for clarification, uh essential, es- essential holy employees that we need, who, who, who would you consider?
It depends on what services we're have, we're gonna have planning commission, we're gonna have board of zoning appeals, we have board architecture review, cause if we do. That adds another person has to put that together, but if we're not, we're just talking about, you know, paying the bills and paying our employees, it's uh me and Julie.
Uh with that question, I mean, all that's done, I mean, no plan, no, no.
Well, now they can do it electronically now if we vote on this, that means they can still have their meetings and they can all call in. If, if we wanted them to have a meeting, that's what this ordinance is gonna let us do. Plan commission, all the other boards can meet over town hall, which means an employee would have to come in and get that all.
No, it doesn't, it's specifically to that town council, it only specifies.
Okay, well, we probably need to change that, unless we're gonna cancel all.
I would make a motion, I would make a motion to cancel all, outside of council, cancel all meetings.
Then leave this as it is, and that's fine.
I would say cancel them indefinitely right now, I wouldn't assign a date to it.
It would be hard, cause of the presentation factor and to have somebody say, come in and present an apartment complex in planning commission. You know, that would not really set up with the technology.
Understand.
Currently, so.
Yeah, good point, okay, good. And then bulletize it, so we.
Yes, we do.
Before we go through what we did last time, somebody bulletize that. It's close town hall to the public. For everything except telephonic business.
I knew we were doomed the other day when we left the meeting and went to I G A and waited since Obama knew. Ron Manute was gone.
Taking comments or you thinking?
No, he's running the motion.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I just, I wanted to offer the whole week's motion, to make sure everybody's. Yeah, no, it's fine, I just, I wanted to offer the whole week's motion, to make sure everybody's got what they want in it. So, it would say something like, close town hall, the manor and the park.
Correct, indefinitely.
Indef, indefinitely, except for telephonic business, so people can still call Steve, and his voicemail can go over to him, people can call Mr. Cook. Or Mr. Meggs, or myself, or whomever they need to help.
Well, Brock is, um, clear on that, so for Steve's staff, are they still on?
Well, that's what we talked about today, we're gonna figure out something for them to do, because, you know, most of what they do is physical work, moving stuff around, uh, caring for grounds, and stuff like that, so. We gotta come up with creative ideas to give them, and I can give them, you know, I mean, it's as, something as, uh, we wanna kind of follow the ordinances, to get everybody to take a bunch of them home, and, you know, sort them the way you want, you know, just making examples here. Looking at future meetings, I wanna, ultimately, I wanna get y'all an information book anyway, that shows like the next year, and all the things that go on, like municipal association meetings, board of education meetings, you know, you name it. S C D O T meetings, penny tax meetings, and then you can have a calendar that you can just refer to on your own, and decide if you would like to plug in one of those meetings and go as a council member. Things like that need to be compiled, and that takes time. National Bureau of Cities, all that cog. Town administrator may at his discretion develop alternate employee work schedules to include his own. All planning commission, B Z A, and, assuming B A R meetings are canceled indefinitely.
We need to specify them or we can say, I'll meet it, with the exception of town council.
Be hard, if, if everybody follows through on the mandate, right, from the governor, might be bringing in a proposal like that.
That's right, that's right.
This, yeah, this all ultimately may be moved, if we get a shelter anywhere.
Right, well, that's why we say indefinitely, so it doesn't, you're covered.
We'd, we'd be able to have a curve.
Yes.
You saw it, if it wasn't for this, my son's company called me this morning, said they had a, in Salt Lake City, in Utah, had a earthquake right almost underneath the plant. Five point seven magnitude in Salt Lake City this morning, shut that plant down near Salt Lake. San Diego coast, they, nobody got hurt, thank goodness, but nine o'clock this morning, and five point seven, it's just shook. So you can feel it as far away as California. It's in Santa Barbara and San Francisco, shut that.
I think Kansas already said, said you can't smoke for the year.
Kansas has?
I believe so.
Is that, that's the first, that's the first I'm gonna drop? All right, well, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna happen.
I told you, I'll put a thing out, I'll babysit, two fifty an hour, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, two, uh, two dollars fifty, sir.
I'll take all the kids.
I already said a hundred.
Included food and circus trips and, and zoo, desert zoo.
I don't know where you go to the zoo at, they shut it. Damn, they wasn't with the day I said I'd babysit there.
They let all the penguins out in Chicago, they're letting them run around the zoo, which is kinda interesting.
I'll take your kids to the zoo and the movies and everything, two hundred and fifty dollars.
I've got, I've got something, it may need a little wordsmithing, but, um. Oh, wait till September.
Well, you know, they closed all the movies, of course, for.
Three months.
Yeah, three months, that's all.
Three months.
Everything.
Claiming everything, too.
About our, uh, restaurant, that, that, across the parking lot, he's, he really picked a bad time, didn't he?
Yep.
But at least he's got time now to finish his inside work.
Well, I guess, but.
Who gonna work?
Him, he's over there doing it.
Oh, he's doing the work?
Yeah, he's doing most of it, construction company's still working.
They're gonna work.
People still.
Outdoor work is, outdoor work will probably continue.
Uh, well, Zach's fees didn't have a single person, unless they all went to lunch at the same time, but they went to a single person.
Yesterday, I saw one, or the fourth.
I just rode by there, and nobody was over there.
Nah, I, I was there at eleven, I said, taking some pictures of new construction in the town, nobody there.
Oh, yeah. I'm getting deep clean done and work right now, because I got several students, I got College of Charleston students, I got U S C students, and all on extended break, and they all coming. I got them hoping up there. They all out, and they need money, I'll put them to work.
Did, uh, we start looking back, anybody to do the play?
Steve's people.
Do it, okay.
Let's see, so that's something they can do, actually, for a week or so, and they're trained and has math.
He's got a staff, probably fifteen people he can, can call on if he needs, so, but, I mean, he and John have a certain time, so they have a thing a little bit, too.
For the, um, outside part?
Outside.
The, uh, playground?
The playground, we talked about, um, disinfecting with, uh, just a water to bleach ratio.
That's all gonna be done by us, we're not going outside sources.
Okay, yes, sir.
All right, I got thirty minutes.
All right, hopefully we'll be done here. All right, this is, this is what I think we're trying to say, it may be a little wordsmithing, but, motion to close town hall, Doco Manor and Doco Park indefinitely restricting public access and conducting business via telephone. Authorize the town administrator to exercise professional judgment by restricting non-essential employees to telecommuting work and allowing essential employees access to town hall to conduct essential business as required and as can be safely conducted. Furthermore, all planning commission, board of architectural review, and board of zoning appeal meetings are suspended indefinitely. And I guarantee you, you can't read this.
Listen, well, she can't hear it, she just heard what you said.
Yeah.
On the tape.
Are those the only meetings that we hold, those three?
I think with, and adding council, we have four meetings on the Thursday Mondays, yes.
Yeah.
So does the full. B Z, B Z A, B A R, planning commission, council.
The motion, if, anything needs to be added?
Yeah, am I leaving something out?
Yeah, they covered what I was thinking.
I think it covers everything.
He's got discretion, the manor is extended indefinitely in the park.
Might not be the right time to ask this question, but if council, I'm gonna be on Monday electronically, or in person, or will you get the agenda?
It's their option, I'm gonna be here.
I'm gonna be in person, that's it.
It's up to y'all, I mean, but that's kinda what we're gonna say in a minute.
I'll be here. But I'll second that motion.
But that was the motion, or that's just you reading?
That was the motion, do you, I guess he's calling for any further discussion.
I thought, yeah, so I thought we were gonna discuss it first.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, this is discussion time.
Add to, subtract from.
Yeah.
Yeah, before you make the move, that's. Rob's a little hard.
Will the gentleman rescind his motion?
No, it.
Right now, if he rescinds it, then you can change it.
I don't know if I'd actually technically made a motion, I would have read it.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Do you, do you have a substitute motion?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we had everything that he had in, before he makes this motion. So we don't got to go to question, answer, so, did he?
How's that?
Uh, to me, he did, he, read it again, read it one more time.
Okay, the motion, the proposed motion shall be to close town hall, Doco Manor and Doco Park indefinitely restricting public access and conductin, and conducting business via telephone. Authorize the town administrator to exercise professional judgment by restricting non-essential employees to telecommuting work and allowing essential employees access to town hall to conduct essential business as required and as can be safely conducted. All planning commission, board of architectural review, and board of zoning appeal meetings are suspended indefinitely.
A tax.
Uh, would that, would A tax, A tax, H tax meetings, would that be something we need to address as well?
Do we have any, anything pending there?
Yeah, not for A tax, I mean, there's some people that wanna apply for H tax, but it probably would hurt to throw that in.
And all other meetings, just put all other.
That's, that's it, or.
With the exception.
Commissions. With the exception of town council.
Then I can add, we'll add the final line, all planning commission, B A R, B Z A meetings, or B Z A, A tax, A tax, and other committees, boards, and commissions meetings are suspended indefinitely, we can do a catch-all.
Do you need to say with the exception of town council?
No.
Okay.
Because I don't think that's addressed in this ordinance, where it says that we can, we can meet electronically. Anything else to add?
Everybody straight.
I'm straight.
Everybody's straight.
I'm straight.
Okay, based on, based on what you just finished reading, I so moved that that be the motion.
Second. Then probably, then seconded, that way it passes the resolution, I guess it is. To amend and suspend our operations as previously read by Councilman Brock.
No, we're, we're dealing with this.
Yeah, this is the local, any discussion? All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed, the ayes have it, the motion passes.
There you go.
Now, we have to go back to the ordinance.
Which incidentally will be ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh oh two.
And then, Mr. Cook, on page two, we need to write in today's date.
Yes.
And then I'm gonna have you read it into the record, and then we're gonna vote on it. Unless, before we do that, if y'all have any changes to this, now's the time.
I think it was good.
Okay, we just need to write in the date and the, the new ordinance number, and if you read it, Mr. Cook, I know it's painful, but read it into the record, and then we'll vote on it.
Ordinance number twenty twenty zero zero two, an emergency order declaring a state of emergency for the town of Lightwood, South Carolina. Whereas SARS, Co, two, corona virus, the virus, the cause of the disease COVID nineteen is responsible for an outbreak that began in Wuhan, China, and is serious, a serious public health concern. And whereas on March eleventh, twenty twenty, the World Health Organization declared a worldwide pandemic, and whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, the President of the United States, Donald J. Trump, declared a national emergency for the United States and its territories over the coronavirus. And whereas, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, the Governor of the State of South Carolina, Henry McMaster, declared a state of emergency due to the coronavirus. Whereas there is an increased risk of the COVID nineteen virus spreading within the population at gatherings of large groups such as public festivals and events, and whereas it has been determined by the mayor and town council that the temporary postponement of all permits allowing for congregation at public and private events, festivals and private events to be held on town, on property, be implemented effective as of March eighteenth, twenty twenty, in an effort to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen virus. And whereas of March eighteen, twenty twenty, there have been forty-seven cases in thirteen counties reported in the state of South Carolina. Whereas, March eighteenth, twenty twenty, the Governor of the State of South Carolina, Henry McMaster, issued an executive order twenty dash ten. Whereas, town council finds that it is in the public interest to protect public health and the general welfare of the public to temporarily suspend the normal operating procedures of town hall by limiting access to the town building and instituting a work from home policy. And whereas, the town of Lightwood is working with other government agencies in an effort to prevent the spread of the disease, and whereas, on March eighteenth, twenty twenty, the President of the United States, Donald J. Trump, provided coronavirus guidelines to America, fifteen days to slow the spread. Now therefore, section one, emergency declaration, be ordained by the mayor and council on this eighteenth day of March, twenty twenty, that the town of Lightwood hereby declares a state of emergency with the town of Lightwood. And section two, town council meetings to be conducted by electronic means, be further ordained that town council meetings may be conducted using such electronic means as will allow full participation by the mayor and town council members and full access to the general public, including public comment and discussion as appropriate. Voting by electronic means is expressly permitted, the mayor is directed and authorized to procure any devices and software required to achieve these objectives and may proceed to do so without regard to competitive voting. Effective date of this ordinance shall be effective as of the date hereof, right as Frank the Mayor.
Now where is that section?
Now, that, that was a voice vote, resolution we've already done, this is the actual.
Not gonna put, okay.
I'm making a motion that we accept this ordinance as written.
Second. That's been moved and properly seconded to accept ord, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero two as written, any discussion? All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed, the ayes have it, the ordinance passes. All right, I'll move to a German, unless you have anything else.
Yes, sir.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor, for Monday's meeting, so the agenda, um, I know we discussed, uh, maybe not having, uh, items on the agenda that may bring out people, uh, talk about the water agreement. What is, uh, the discretion of the mayor and council for staff, as we create the agenda, what do you wanna see on the agenda?
Everyone wants to see that water on there.
Okay.
Everyone wants to see that, wanna get that over with, I mean, we done advertised it, and then we told, that's why we having the meeting, let's go ahead with it.
Yeah.
Let's put a word out on our social media page or something, people have questions, and so, they already got questions to contact us beforehand or something, but we're limited access, we just shut town hall.
That's right, that's right.
So, ain't gonna be nobody there but us.
Yeah, but they can, I mean, I'd say, can you have them call in, I don't know, that's.
Can we, you know, put it on the, uh.
We'll look into.
Townside, you know, we.
Well, this is, uh. Can we get to a bridge line?
Councilman Griffin, you know, always updates the next door, so if anybody has any questions, they know how to get in touch with us, and we can put it out.
This was a public hearing on the water franchise, so I don't think you're gonna be able to exclude others that want to show up.
Can we set up chairs outside and do it? I think it sounds kinda.
What happens if we don't address the water contract this Monday?
You just have to re-advertise all over again for three weeks, that's all.
Okay, but let's, let's just say, let's just, let's just play devil's advocate here, and let's say that this, 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 uh, state of emergency lasts for the next two months. And that we don't have enough time to approve the contract before the expiration of the current contract. I think given the circumstances, it'll be okay, the water's not gonna stop flowing, wind, bros not gonna cut us off or anything like that, if we go over the June thirtieth.
And I'm sure.
July.
July one, is it July thirty first, or?
July thirty first.
Okay, so, okay, we have a little bit more time than I think, okay.
Under the circumstances, I'm sure Mr. Meggs and the attorneys up there could get a clause changed or something due to, if we couldn't make it happen, I see your point, like an emergency situation. We'll, they stand the current contract another three months before the new, you know, I, I don't know, it might come out of bounds, Mr. Meggs, or.
No, we can, we can make an inquiry.
But I mean, it's not like a state statute that you must do it by the thirty first of July.
No, it's just, it's just contractual.
Okay.
Heard of, heard of the governor's order, though, I mean, we're, that's considered service, are we, with you not disconnecting?
Oh, but I'm not gonna disconnect, we're not talking about disconnect.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, I'm talking about what you're saying that.
Well, I know that they're not going to, yeah, they can't, yeah, like utilities cannot be disconnected, the president has issued orders to restrict evictions, all that stuff, so.
The only real jeopardy or risk that you run is, we lose, potentially, we lose the, uh, rate break that was a part of the negotiation.
We have to go back into negotiations.
Rate break, then we go back into renegotiation, but does that give us the option for Columbia?
Not West Columbia.
Is in negotiation.
No.
I don't think Columbia wants us.
Yeah, we done beat that horse. Yeah, that horse has been beaten to death.
I need to be called, because I don't know.
Yeah, we done beat that horse for two years.
We would have to re-advertise for three mistakes a week, switch, we're looking at a meeting of, you know, having it wrapped up, like July thirty first, and there is time.
How many readings do we need, two, or is it just one?
Two. Does, doesn't the audit, audit that's coming out from the, the governor and the United States, doesn't that take precedence over everything?
That's what I just.
So if, if they're, if they got precedence, and they're telling everybody to cease and desist, basically, then we can't go into anything, because they're telling everybody to cease and desist.
I've read, uh, the governor's order, uh, not with that question in mind, but I don't recall anything in McMaster's order that would basically say everybody's frozen in time. And, um, not, you know, meet with the no disconnects and all those things, but, uh. And, um, not, you know, for me with the no disconnects and all those things, but, um, you know, let's just hope this crisis eases, it's not gonna clear. I, I, my, my fifty-year-old nephew is a CDC epidemiologist, PhD type, he's in Dallas Fort Worth Airport, been there for a month. And, uh, he says this thing's gonna go on until, in the fall. And, uh, so far, everything he has said is coming to fruition, he knows, he knows what he's talking about, so.
Military's saying the same thing, now, if you're implying we postpone this March twenty-third meeting, we'll, we need to do that now.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a, a hot button topic, it's been a hot button topic, it's gonna be a hot button topic. If we need two readings, we could do it in June and July.
I think we could, um, you could, with the help of the press, uh, if you're so inclined, say, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna postpone this public hearing, uh, to a future time, uh, and maybe only have to add, advertise once. In other words, we, you know, we had fixed a date, now we're gonna push it back due to the crisis. And, um, but I, I don't, I don't guess it'd be too burdensome to just advertise it. Yeah, it's here for a few consecutive weeks, uh, yeah.
That's what we got.
I, I, I think that if that, water is, is the primary reason we're gonna meet, I think that we can do away with that, the twenty-third, and look at what's gonna happen between now, because we met every day, every week, so basically, we have nothing else. That's gonna be the point, if we put it to the side, let's take, I'll, take a little bit of our own medicine, shut it down. Because, and then we'll come back, uh, and let, let, even if it's, even if we have to come back to a call week.
At June, I think we gotta be a week apart, or two weeks apart, three, three weeks.
Three weeks in the last, um, advertising, the week before the meeting.
Right, but I mean, the first vote and the second vote. Just a week, one week, okay, so we could do it middle of June and first of July, if we had to, so we're gonna.
Take things to public hearing, get it out of the way, wait a few, a week, and then you can have second reading, special call if you need to.
And then so, cancel March completely and just let's figure out what's gonna happen in April?
Okay.
We'll need a motion.
A motion with, with song?
Yeah, where do you go?
I think I'll call.
Phone call.
Matt phone.
So, would that be April twenty-seventh?
Yeah, that's five weeks, that's over five weeks from now, hopefully we have some more clarity by then.
And a motion that we cancel the March twenty-third meeting to move to the April meeting.
We could, uh. Just cancel the council meeting.
Cancel meeting.
Don't, don't wanna meet on the twenty-third. Just at all, we just, we'll have to re-advertise for the water contract, that's not a big deal. Let the public know in two, three consecutive weeks or whatever. Anyway, spend motion, on the floor.
Okay.
Spend properly moved and seconded that we postpone the March twenty-third town council meeting of Lightwood, South Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Any open citizen comment, Mr. White?
Your turn.
Motion to adjourn, I'm sitting.
Spend properly moved and seconded to adjourn today's meeting, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.